Hatfield, welcome to the February 14th, 2023, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. Happy Valentine's Day. We have this romantic evening planned of discussing budgets and other various exciting things. So anyway, but happy to be spending the evening with my colleagues.
Likewise.
So as usual, I'm going to begin the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Anybody have any announcements tonight?
No.
Nothing?
Just Happy Valentine's Day, that's all. You already said it.
Yep, nothing from me.
I didn't realize I stole your announcement. I'm sorry. It doesn't look like we have anyone here for public forum here on the agenda. So we can move right along to approval of the minutes.
So I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 7th, 2023.
I have some changes to the February 2nd ones that I will get to you. So could we hold on those, please? Sorry.
That's okay.
I interrupted you.
Yeah, but I was.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we can hold on those because I was actually going to say I was not present at the February 2nd meeting. I know we're talking about the 7th.
Yes.
I digress, but.
Sorry.
That's okay. So I did make a motion for the February, to approve this February 7th.
I'll second that.
Select Board meeting.
A motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ed, do you mind if we hold on the February 2nd? I just want to talk to Marlene about a couple of things. Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
Okay. I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Okay. So that was quick. So our first order of public business, posted business, is a request from some seniors to use the second floor of Town Hall for recreational activities. We have a letter from John Jagajinski, who attends an exercise class at the Senior Center. He's asking if a group of seniors could use the upstairs room to play cornhole. The ceiling is too low, down cellar, to be able to do that. So they're looking to do this just for an hour on Fridays. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. Is there any reason we wouldn't want to do that? I mean, that's accessible by the elevator?
It is accessible. The only.
Is there construction still taking place?
The bathroom is renovations is wrapping up. Should be complete by next week, but I think actually it'll be the end of this week. And so, you know, I think if anybody's going to use the upstairs, that bathroom would have to be fully accessible. The only other thing is, you know, there's been some comments made by staff that it, there could be noise that could, you know.
Echo through the hall?
The floor. Come through the floor.
So could I suggest that? Because I'd be, hang on, Lydia. I mean, I think this is, it's a great opportunity for them to have some, you know, fun and exercise during a time of year when it's tough to do that outside. I certainly know that John is going to be responsible with picking things up and all of that. So I guess as long as the bathroom is ready and accessible, because that's important. And let's just give it a try and see if it's.
See how it works.
If it is somewhat disruptive, then we'd need to revisit it. But I think that they'll probably be respectful that there's people working in the building. And I mean, that would be my.
Are you saying they're going to finally finish the bathroom in a week?
It looks that way.
I hope so.
I can't wait to see it. I want to, I want to go up.
Well, the.
I do agree with Diana, the fact that if the bathroom's available, let's try it and see if there's a lot of noise, if that causes a problem or whatever.
I'd just like to add the contracted work. The contracted services should be done the end of this week or at the latest.
What do you expect it would be functioning?
The town still has some work to do up there.
It's just the floor has to be sanded.
The floor outside the bathroom. The town's going to take care of it, and then some painting.
Okay.
But that won't prevent the use of the bathroom?
I know, that would leave, the bathroom's functional without.
Bathroom would be accessible, right.
Okay. Lydia, did you have a?
I just wanted to talk to you that I think maybe you should just make sure it's under the purview of the Senior Center. So it's a town thing and not a person, a private person.
Oh, it's a program that is offered through the Council on Aging.
Okay, all right. I didn't hear anything about that.
It's a program for the seniors. Oh, yeah, no, it's through the seniors.
Yeah, no, this would obviously be through the. It is through the council. Asking to do it through the Council on Aging. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's an interesting use of the space and I.
If I may, so I agree with everything my colleagues have said and Lydia. So do we want to get back to John and say?
I would like to get.
It would be effective next Friday, not this Friday, next Friday, if, if all the workers are out of, you know, but tentatively, let's, in the next couple of weeks.
It does need to be coordinated through the Council on Aging.
Yes.
It is a Council on Aging function.
Yep.
And, and then we would just remind him that, you know, there's people working in the building.
Right, yep.
And I'm sure they'll be very respectful of that, just knowing John. And so that would be, that would be great. They're going to be the pickleball and cornhole capital of Western Massachusetts. So you're good on that item, Marlene?
Thank you.
So the next topic is an application for an entertainment license from Heritage Tavern. And they are looking for an indoor entertainment license during operational hours. And this is for karaoke. If I, if I read this right. And then a jukebox.
It also, it also does say live entertainment. So there's three different things on the application.
Because I looked for that.
The karaoke would be live entertainment. The jukebox would be a separate entertainment license.
Oh, live entertainment would be, is live, is, do they mean karaoke or do they mean something else?
That's not what this says.
You're right, it does.
I mean, that's not how I interpret it because there's separate, you know, separate delineations. Is that the right word?
There is, there is live.
Entertainment meaning karaoke, that's not what it says.
It says, on the next page, license entertainment karaoke? It does say live entertainment karaoke and then on.
That would be, it falls under the statute for live entertainment, the karaoke.
Right.
But the way this is. The way this is written, we are, we would be.
Allowing live.
It does say live entertainment. If that's what they want, I mean.
Right, I see what you're saying. Yeah, license to have live entertainment, then license to have karaoke. I don't think there's two separate requests there, right?
We just need, well, so this is for us to say, should we have a hearing? Right? So that the neighbors can come.
The board does have that option to have a hearing if they'd like to.
Well, I can't imagine there'd be live entertainment or karaoke entertainment until 1:00 in the morning, quite honestly. I think that's a little late. Especially Sundays, 12, 20, you know what I mean? I think they're covering their open, the hours they're open, and I get that. But I, I think most places wrap it up by maybe 11:00 on a weekend or whatever. It might be in the afternoon on a Sunday. I mean, maybe we can get a little more information. I'm not against it. I just, I would prefer some more clarification about it.
And I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, which I can't think of any establishment currently that has an entertainment license till 1:00.
Well, that was going to be in my next question.
Right, right.
What does Fish Tales have?
Right. Okay. And the other, the other thing on here I noticed is it, it kind of says some contradictory things. So under the terms and conditions, it says the license is to be reviewed after one year, but then it says the license expires December 31st, 2023.
Right.
So I think we would take out that license to be reviewed after one year. So.
Yeah, maybe we can just find, get a pulse of what they're, what they're thinking.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised they're not.
She was supposed to be here. I guess maybe something happened at the restaurant.
Which could happen. I've heard all good things, by the way, about the restaurant. So do we want to have a hearing on it or just get some clarification first? I mean, depending what they want to do, the neighbors may want to weigh in on this.
Right, I think we need clarification. If it's just karaoke, which states, I mean, it's, it says live entertainment and then it says karaoke.
Right.
So if it's just karaoke, that's one thing, but if they're having a band come in and.
Well, they're also looking to go, if I'm not mistaken, outside, right? Eventually, the patio, aren't they looking?
I asked you that question, and I understand this is strictly for inside.
So then those things should be on here, so that, right?
Right, yes.
So then I think that this needs to be flushed out a little bit.
Yep.
Yes.
Further clarification is necessary.
I don't have a problem with the karaoke, the jukebox.
Agreed, or live music, as long as we.
Or live music, as long as we know what's going on and we're consistent with the hours. And so let's just.
If we could just get some clarification, I think.
I mean, we want to be supportive of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure. But we also want to be mindful that they're in a neighborhood.
Yep.
A very close, you know, residential neighborhood. So, Marlene, your town administrator report.
So you have received a draft copy of a social media policy that has been in progress for some time. And I have, you know, reviewed the, the policy with legal counsel as well. And I, I don't have any, any problems with, with the majority of the proposed edits. And the disciplinary policy, I do agree with him that we don't need to be redundant. If we have a general disciplinary policy, which the town does in our HR manual, then we don't really need it here. However, reviewing this disciplinary policy, I feel it's much clearer and easier to read as opposed to the disciplinary, the town's HR policy. So that's the conversation, another conversation I'll have with the board that, you know, do we want to clean up the current disciplinary policy in the town's HR book?
I would just like personally, a little more time to review it.
Yeah, and I would say consistency between our disciplinary policies.
Yeah, maybe we adopt this into the other, you know.
Exactly, okay. Yeah, I had read the one you had sent us, but I noticed this one has, you know, some edits on it.
It's marked up quite a bit, that's why.
So I could use a little more time as well. But I, I'm grateful that we, you know, are moving forward with, with some sort of a policy and hopefully people, you know, understand that sometimes things that are posted on social media take on a life of their own and oftentimes are inaccurate or whatever.
Well, I mean, we are a professional organization and we should expect professionalism from our folks. Did you have anything you wanted to add about that?
Well, just make a motion to table it until you have a chance to review it further.
Yep, second, if you need a second for that.
Did we even need to do that or? Do we need to vote to table it?
No, you don't need to vote necessarily, but it's entirely up to the board if you'd like to.
Okay, and then the Comcast license.
I had hoped to have an update today because I had had a scheduled call this morning, a conference call this morning with, with Attorney Sullivan. And then he wasn't able to make it. He was trying to reschedule throughout the day and I just had other commitments, so I couldn't make it. And I had asked Brian to join the conversation and sort of cut into his schedule too. So we were not able to, to meet today. We're trying to set something up Thursday morning.
Okay, well, we'll revisit it at the next meeting. Thanks.
By the way, it's an update of where we are with.
Doesn't necessarily mean it'll be ready.
Correct.
Right, right.
Right.
An update where.
We're ready.
We're ready.
We're ready if this is finalized before the term expires.
The good news is, Diana, it's a 10-year agreement. So hopefully before the 10 years are up, we'll actually have it signed off.
I just want it done before he's not on the board anymore so that neither of us have to try to step into it.
Just saying.
I know.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I don't know, I find it embarrassing because I really believed that we had settled it and it was just.
Well, I don't think it's embarrassing.
No, yeah, it's not our issue per se. I mean, it's, we're just, we're the victim.
We'll get there.
We'll get there. We always get there.
We'll get there. Okay, so then topic four is our town clerk, Lydia Zish, is here to discuss a deadline for citizens' position, citizens' petitions, excuse me. Yeah, I know.
So currently, we don't have a deadline for citizens' petitions at the conference a week or so ago. They were saying how, you know, you should set some sort of deadline so you have a little more control over the warrant because things coming in at last minute.
This is for going on the town meeting warrant?
Right, right. Because if somebody comes in at the last minute, then you're trying to hurry up and get board of registered members in to certify the signatures and, you know, it just.
Do you have a recommended date?
I'm thinking February 28th. But, you know, it could be maybe a little bit later, but.
Well, could we do this? I'm not, we're not, I'm not expecting that there's going to be any, but.
I know there's one coming.
There is?
There is one coming.
Okay. You know what it's about?
I'm not, I'm not sure enough to explain it, so I think I'll just won't say anything.
That's fine. So maybe for the sake, because, because we never had one before and February 28th isn't that far away.
Right, yeah.
In fairness to whoever may be preparing this, maybe for this.
I asked him to try to get it in before the end of the month.
But maybe in, maybe we, for this year, we say maybe something like March 15th, just in fairness, but set it for February 28th moving forward.
Right, because by April 10th, 12th, somewhere around there. I'm ordering the ballots and ordering, you know.
Well, the Select Board, Lydia and I had a conversation about this. So the Select Board has to sign the warrant the week of April 14th. And I like to allow two weeks for town council, myself, to review all the warrant articles that are drafted. So, you know, if you back it up.
Right, yeah. So it's not like you can wait until, you know.
Right, so I mean, I'm fine with February 28th. But for this year, especially if you have knowledge that one is coming, I guess in fairness to whoever's putting that together, they never had deadlines before. So to give that, to say, oh, by the way, we have to have it in two weeks.
Well, I told him that I was going to the next selectman's meeting. We just talked, I told him the whole thing about talking, you know, talking about it at the conference and the suggestions. And I said, my recommendation to the board is going to be February 28th. So I would suggest you get it in before February 28th. And he thought he just needed a weekend to pull it together and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, if you've got the feeling that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's going to be fine.
Okay.
But we don't know if there's others.
We don't know if there's others.
So I, I think I would, for me personally, I think I would agree with Diana for this year because we don't want anyone to say, okay, they're only giving us two weeks now. So if it's okay with you, Lydia, in putting the ballots and articles, maybe March 15th for this year and then February 28th or March 1st or whatever for the future, but.
Do what we have to do, which is, you know, it's, you know, just lining up the board of registers.
Totally, totally understand, totally get it.
But are those two deadlines okay for you? The March 15th one for this year?
Can we move it up to like March 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just trying so nobody can accuse any of us as saying, well, you just, you announced it and I don't want to give you two.
Yeah, and it wasn't fair or didn't give people time.
Correct, that's the only reason I'm even jumping on that bandwagon. Yeah, March 10th is fine. Is that a Friday?
It is a Friday.
Okay, so March 10th, Friday, March 10th.
So I will make a motion that we set a policy that citizens' petitions are due by February 28th every year for consideration on town meeting warrant.
Accept.
You accept.
Well, should it be a separate motion? A separate vote?
Starting in 2024 or something.
Yeah, okay, starting in 2024. And this year, they are due by March 10th.
Okay. I mean, he seconded it.
Yeah, but I do have a question. So will that appear somewhere, like for the future?
We'll put it on the news feed.
Okay.
Because I think the news feed, probably most people that sign up for getting those emails of anything that's happening, sign up for the news feed. They don't necessarily sign up for what the Conservation Commission is doing or different boards.
But I meant, will it appear in the future? Like if somebody in August wants to say, gee, I wonder when I have to have a citizen's petition, will it, will that information exist on the town clerk's website or something?
Yeah, I'll put it on the town clerk's website. So it's on there as well.
Okay.
Maybe we could put something on social media that.
Yeah, usually I ask Karen to post something to the Facebook page.
Just so people know. I mean, I just want to make sure that, since there's never been a deadline before, I just don't want anyone to say, we didn't know about this. Okay, okay. And then, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I know, what, there was two things.
No, I need to, we didn't finish the vote. So a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Brian, for keeping me on my toes.
If I was closer to you, I'd kick you under the table.
And then you wanted to talk about options for early voting and vote by mail.
Well, again, went to the conference and of course, all this thing is kind of shaken out after COVID and what they've been doing in the state elections and federal elections. So vote by mail is required for even a local election unless we opt out. In order to opt out for vote by mail, you have to hold a hearing. You have to have a public roll call vote, almost like town meeting because it's the citizens that have to vote to not have vote by mail. And it has to be done at least 45 days before the election. My recommendation is to have vote by mail. Do not opt out. I think people really like it as a convenience. And since it is required or they're trying to push it, I would suggest we keep it for local elections.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Voting by mail.
It seemed like it increases participation.
It does, it does. Then there's voting early in person, which they did, took the opposite approach for local elections. So you must opt in. In-person early voting for local elections is opt in. So there is no voting in person for a local election unless first the board of registers, at least 50%, need to recommend it to the board of selectmen.
How many registrars are there?
Three, four, counting me. So I'm, a town clerk is automatically on, on the board of registers. So if the board of registers, registrars do nothing, then the Select Board can't do anything.
Okay.
My recommendation is that we don't do early voting in person. You've got the voting by mail, that's their option. It's very expensive to do the in-person early voting because I have to hire people to man the stations. I can't do it in my office because there's not enough room to set up because you have to have the handicap voting machines set up. You have to have a couple accessible booths. So I have to have somebody set up in here.
And I think to be, I think to be clear, just to reiterate, this is for local elections only.
Only, only.
So the residents understand.
Right.
So this would be May.
Right. And the procedures for the other elections are pretty well set.
Yes.
Whether there'll be some more tweaking or anything this summer or over this year or the beginning of next year before the presidential primary, who knows?
Yeah, I would agree with you, Lydia. I mean, it seems that if we're going to allow the mail-in ballots, we have town meeting the week before the election, so it'll be reiterated once again.
Right, yeah.
Well, and that establishes convenience and it establishes accommodations for people who may have difficulty getting here on Election Day. So you have plenty of options to still vote and participate.
Yeah, and, you know, they, if they don't like the mail, they can, you know, drop it off at the office, they can put it in my mailbox, which is locked. The drop box, we always have that available for ballots and that is locked and checked quite a bit, you know, when there is an election. So I just, I didn't, it didn't seem necessary to spend the money for the in-person early voting, but I wanted to at least bring it up to you in case you guys had a different opinion and then I didn't rethink it.
Advice is good.
Yep, I would agree. We don't need to do anything from a voting or approving perspective.
No.
Great.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, I like it.
Easy enough. Do you have anything else for Lydia?
No, I agree with Lydia. I mean, I don't think we need it. So, perfect. So we don't have to take any action.
So what's the procedure for early voting? They have to request, I mean, for, excuse me, mail-in?
Mail-in, they have, there are, there is a ballot on the town clerk's, not a ballot, don't mix up your words. There is an application for mail-in ballot on the town clerk's webpage on, on our website. And I plan, once this meeting happened, I plan to ask the post office if I can put some applications out there, maybe the center store.
What about down at the Council on Aging?
Yeah, like put some downstairs, you know, so people have access to those applications.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Still, oh, that's not on the agenda, I can't tell you.
Never mind. So we can take a couple-minute break until the Finance Committee comes in? So we'll take a break and be right back. Okay, so we're back and we are resuming our budget discussions with all of our departments. Tonight, we're, we're joined by our town clerk to review her budget. Lydia, it's pretty straightforward, but if, did you want to speak to it at all?
No, I think it's pretty straight. The town clerk salary is level funded. The part-time assistant salary is level funded, except that we did add an extra $2,500 for possible transitional training as I'm not seeking reelection and will be leaving on the 22nd of May. Let's see. Everything else is level funded. The elections and registrations go down because we have one less election during FY14. And so do the expenses. And the stipend for the town clerk is level funded, but actually you could, you could probably just take it out if you wanted to. It's only $1,000. But the next town clerk will not be eligible for it for at least three years if they take the testing. So it's, you know, up to you whether you want to keep it in there so you don't forget to put it back. It'll, it'll just go back to the.
I mean, it seems like we could, if we don't need it, remove it from the line with reminders to ourselves to put it back in at the fiscal year where we could need to access it.
All right.
Which one is that?
It's the certification, certification stipend.
Because I passed a big test and got an extra $1,000 under statute.
Well, unless, well, we probably.
About to be a town clerk for at least three years even to take the test.
And we probably don't have, I mean, if it's an elected position, it has to be a resident. We probably don't have a resident that has that certification, but we could.
I think I would have heard about it.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know, Marlene, are you comfortable with removing it and then putting a tickler in the budget three years from now to add it back in? I don't know what you guys feel about that.
I'm sort of leaning to just leave it there, to be honest with you, because we don't I'm sort of leaning to just leave it there, to be honest with you, because we don't know if something else may come up for, I mean, for that amount of money.
It's only $1,000 anyway, so. And it goes back.
It just comes, goes back on the past.
Get used, it goes back.
I don't care either way. It was just a suggestion.
We don't know who, we don't know who's going to run or has anybody expressed interest? That's it. You have to run again. Sorry. Okay.
I was gonna say, guess you're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, this is all pretty straightforward. I, didn't we give a lot more money over the last few years because of the way elections were running? With the extra vote, the in-person and the mailing and the expenses?
The salary was raised to compensate for the extra hours in those election years where you have more elections.
But I mean, wasn't, didn't we have to pay more election workers because there was the in-person, early in-person?
Yes.
And wasn't there a much higher postage budget because you had?
And, and, and that, so we're back on that, yeah. But that, but because, my worksheet is based on, I have an Excel spreadsheet. And so you have everything you need for the presidential primary. The election workers, the workers for the early voting hours. Everything's lined up and I have one of those sections for each election. So when I do my budget, I take away the elections that aren't happening. So it decreases the budget and the same with the expenses.
No, I totally get that. But weren't the, if you're basing it off of last year's elections, weren't they more expensive still? Because we were doing early in-person voting.
Correct, yes.
So you had more people.
The election budget is almost doubled, tripled? Yeah, it's gotten very expensive to do elections.
But my, we just decided not to do early in-person.
Correct, yes. So that will save some money.
Right, but it's built into here.
I'm trying to think. I probably did.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know what was going to happen. That's not what I'm looking for. All right, I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to grab the Excel spreadsheet, but I'll take a look at that and I might be a little.
Yeah, maybe you can just see, because if, if we're not doing it, then we don't need to fund it. So maybe if, if there is a difference in this, you could just get a revised one tomorrow. It's just going to go down.
It's just going to go down.
It's not, you know.
Right.
And that's just because, you know, in the, in the last few years, we've had the early in-person and we just made a decision based on Lydia's recommendation not to do, we're still going to do vote by mail.
Vote by mail.
But not the early in-person, which means you don't have to have those hours staffed.
Right.
For the town.
So there could be a decrease in the lines of conducting the elections. I mean, I don't think it's going to be earth shattering. You know, we're not going to all be trying to figure out what to do with all the extra money.
I think even if I had estimated, I would have only estimated for maybe
Not much.
An extra day or two days or something. I wasn't going to do like a whole week of early voting in-person.
Well, it's just worth looking at, so.
Yeah.
If, if there needs to be an adjustment.
I'll take a look at it. Thank you.
Other than that, it's very straightforward and appreciate that. And there's no added, I know you converted over to like a computer program. There's no, for dogs and that sort of thing, there's no ongoing?
Yeah, there is, there is ongoing for that.
Is it in here?
But it's built into my expenses.
It's in the software licensing?
My expenses, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
It's fine with me. I don't have any questions, Ed.
Don't, I'll stop. Thanks, Lydia.
Finance committee, any?
Hopefully it's the easiest budget.
We've had some easy ones this year. People have been. Thank you very much. So Bob is going to come down in a few minutes.
Oh, great.
Which is great. Do we want to take up the planning board?
I think so.
Yes. Right. I mean, the planning board has submitted a level, level funded budget.
Yes, they have. Actually, there will be a bit of a savings in the current fiscal year planning board budget because we have not hired a part-time planner. Actually, Stephanie and I are meeting tomorrow to review applicants. We, we did post the position, the job description and posting.
So that, that money will just be turned in to?
Go to the general fund.
Yeah, go to the general fund, but, but it's already built in for this coming year, so. Well, I mean, I don't have any questions about that.
Did they spend any of the money for their?
For what?
Their planner, their part-time planner.
Well, that's what Marlene was just saying. They're just about to hire someone.
The job description was approved.
Money turned back from this year.
Yeah.
It's hard to find someone hard though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially part-time.
Easy.
So, you know, just to keep in mind that all departments that are required to publish legal notices, we've seen a significant increase in the cost to advertise. Planning board did not increase their advertising, publishing, advertising line item. So that could be a problem depending on the number of hearings they have.
It's impossible to predict, right?
It's hard to judge that.
Doesn't the planning board, if, if you are an applicant, aren't you responsible to pay that?
And, and that question came up. So if there have been some errors in the posting requirements made and the town is said to publish again and that was due to an error on the planning board, so the planning board has paid for it and not expected the applicant to pay for it again.
The way around that is the town takes care of doing everything, but the bill gets paid by
Yes.
the applicant. I mean, that's.
Unless we make the mistake.
My understanding is the applicant does, does pay for it.
But you're saying we made the mistakes.
There was an error that the planning board made in publishing.
They pay, but we've kind of put it all together and published it.
Right, but if we make an error, we can't really.
Correct. We can't, we can't fault the applicant.
No, 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 that, no, we should not fault the applicant.
So there really is no need to increase that line, I mean.
I mean, if there were to be a year where maybe some extra needed, I'm sure that.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that one. Anybody else have anything else on that?
No, thank you.
Bob, thanks for coming down early on Valentine's Day. Come on up.
All right, Carrie.
So Bob has given us four proposals, which represent four different scenarios, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to run through those with us?
Sure. So I was very busy in December getting different budgets set out. So it started with just the level service. That was what was asked of us originally. So that's the first one. As you saw, I think that one has a couple percentage increase on the fire side. Or actually, the fire side actually ends up showing a 0% increase on a level service. The ambulance side would show a 3% increase. There was some other increase in cost for some of the service contracts that we've had. We have some new equipment that we were able to get, the AEDs through the ARPA funds. But the ambulance has always handled the service contracts and those come up every year. So that increased a little bit. So that's why that's showing that 3% on the level service and emergency management remains level funded on that. So, any other questions on that one? That one's pretty straightforward. I think that's easy.
That one's easy.
Right.
And this is just fire?
Nope, all three of them are there.
Ambulance and emergency management.
All three.
I did, just for your reference, saving paper, ink, I only printed one of emergency management because it stays the same whichever package it comes across the board.
We get it.
So you don't see any, emergency management in all four packs.
So on this budget for the ambulance, it's, how many, it's level funded. So how many, how much, how many people are we hiring besides yourself and the other person you have?
So the, the level service budget that's listed on the top, that would keep it as one full-time that we've had for three fiscal years.
Full-time with, with, yeah, okay.
So full-time firefighter EMT, five days a week. And it's split with 32 and change on, coming from fire and the remainder coming from the ambulance side, which is what it was for the last couple of years when we hired firefighter Silberno.
And so.
Change from ambulance.
What about the overnight on-call program on this? Is that the same $2 an hour or is that more than that?
Yep, so it's with the normal calls that have happened since we started, this current fiscal year is 273 per hour.
Yeah.
So you'll see 5140 is the code. It's shown as $15,944 is what it costs just for the overnight on-call for a year. And then the incident response would be anything outside of the normal Monday through Friday.
Right, right.
Yep.
And what's the intermittent employees?
That would be the calls.
That would be the actual calls.
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's a terminology that was there and it carries from the fire side. It's showing, I think, as fire intermittent as well and somewhere around here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this would leave a full-time firefighter EMT during the day shift.
Correct.
With the overnight on-call and incident.
Correct.
Okay.
That would take it back to essentially what?
Before the COVID money.
Before COVID money, before the free cash money. This would take it back to essentially FY22 and the first half of FY.
Okay.
Yeah, FY22.
Okay, so I'm going to raise that. Sort of pre-ARPA.
Yeah, pre, pre-ARPA, pre-free cash.
Essentially.
Staff, correct.
Essentially somewhere $300,000 less than what we're doing currently.
Right, well, I'm sure Bob will get into that with these current ones, other ones.
So that was the, that was essentially the level service going back to before we started putting on the extra shifts. So two full-time staff. The second one that you would look at would be at the top, it's going to say 16-hour current model. So that is myself.
Is this the one that says 271%?
I'm on the front.
That's 271, 287, 372.
It's up here, Bob, right? When you just said this is where it's.
It's a 16-hour current model. And it's on the fire side is the one that I would put in the first.
Yep. So, okay.
16 hour, the 16-hour with station overnight department request?
No, this is 16-hour current model. On the front, it says a 271% increase on the cover page. Okay.
So looking at the fire side, essentially the numbers would stay the same looking across the board because that really doesn't change anything. What ended up happening, so if we're comparing and looking, the 23 approved budget versus 24 requested, you'll notice that some of the numbers, one's going to show, I think this one's a minus 11% on the fire side. There's one of them in there. And that really comes down to is that the 183,000 that approved from free cash went within the fire department's lines for FY23. And it was to make sure that we were able to differentiate between what comes from ambulance revenue versus what we were coming from another funding source. So that's the only reason why there's a, a change if you, excuse me, if you see that is we, I moved it back to the ambulance budget as we kind of move forward. So you'll see kind of the numbers might not necessarily perfectly, the percentage differences may not perfectly jive. But that's, it's just moving it from one side to the other. Other than that, the fire department one pretty much remains the same. You know, a couple percent increase. There was increases in our reporting software and some maintenance around the station and our breathing air compressor service, the gentleman retired. That price actually doubled, but I was able to move some money around. So on that side, you'll see the 2% increase on the fire side. The ambulance 16-hour current model is where you'll see the big change.
Sorry, I'm a little slow. What is the difference in 22, the 166 to the 183? Can you remind me what that bump up was that?
It would have been an increase to the full-time salaries. So basically for the full-time firefighter, contractual obligations for myself as well. I, we increased the original fire training budget because we have been running short in it.
Wait a second, this, this is the, the 183.
22 to 23.
780 minus 166, 224.
Yeah, so even looking at the front sheet, there's almost a $4,000 increase in fire training because fire training, more people were coming, so.
Which is a good thing.
Correct. So the, the 23 to 24, it stays the same, but what we actually spent was, in 22 was less. So remember, the 22 is what we actually spent, not necessarily what was approved. We turned money back. I don't have that figure off the top of my head, but I think it was in the 10,000 or 12,000 range, give or take.
Right.
So that was, those are the actual expenses for the year, for FY22.
Right. And it, and, and so it's about a 2% from 24, next year's budget to, to our current budget.
Correct.
In this request, in this model, is, are you figuring in like the, because you had comp time paid out this year? Is that figured into this or that's not figured in?
Not for going to the F24, no.
For the, to the 16.
The money that was coming to pay the comp is out of the 24 or 23 budget. But that's not showing up there because that's not an expense that we show on these reports yet. Because this is what was approved at town floor. So the FY23 budget is just what was approved last year.
Actual.
22 is what was actual, 23 was approved.
Right.
That we're currently working within, but it doesn't show the actual expenditures to date for FY23.
Okay.
Yeah, because that would change depending on the number of fire calls and.
Correct.
And. But that, you're going to be within your budget line this year?
Right now, it's, it's running a little bit close just because obviously part of the end half of, for the beginning half of FY23, we had a couple of structure fires and you got 10, 12 people for six hours at a whack. So it, it chews up through a lot of the fire intermittent line, but the fire training line's a little bit less than the 50% at, more than 50% through the fiscal year, so. It kind of balances.
I guess my, my question though is, are you building in that comp? Or a projection of it?
I didn't build any payout for FY24 because I think during our conversation, it wouldn't be paid again. It was paid in FY23, it won't be included in FY24 payout.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're asking the right amounts. Okay. So then that's the fire side on the ambulance side?
So then the ambulance side, that's where you're going to see, similar to what we are currently working in in FY23. The ambulance full-time salaries because what was originally approved straight out of the budget between ambulance revenue and/or taxation, which ambulance revenue is all covering the ambulance. That's why you see is that it was the $14,915 in that full-time salary line. Because the other money comes from free cash and we have that crossover of ambulance revenue, funds ambulance services, just to make sure that we kind of took it back to what are we actually looking at going forward. That 161 is almost identical to what I had requested in FY23 for the actual salaries to provide that 16-hour a day, seven-day a week coverage.
Okay.
At the paramedic level. With this one, it would be moved to two full-time medics and two full-time basics. And that's where the, the fourth line down, the 33,873 is essentially to backfill those positions, holiday pay benefits and all those other things that we have to kind of cover. And then the 63 is the other hours that still wouldn't be covered because we're still not covering them. If you do 40, 40 in all the positions, there's more hours than that in a week.
So what is the, do you have a total if you add, I mean, I can add them up.
Yeah, it's 240-ish, I think.
That's what I'm asking.
Total salaries is 292,602.
292.
602.
602.
Okay. Okay, that's with 16 hours a day of coverage, seven days a week.
Correct.
Okay.
Still with the overnight on-call, so that number stayed the same.
Is that number in that 292?
So that's the 5140 line, so that's the 15,940.
So 5140 up is in the 292? Is that right?
Yeah, all, anything that's salary is a part of that 292.
Okay.
So my, part of my salary, full-time, part-time, on-call and after-hours response.
Okay. Okay.
You've got like paramedic. You've got like paramedic school, are you, that's for sending people to school?
Yep, so the 11.5 that's in there covers the cost of one person to go to paramedic school and one person to go to EMT basic school.
And just remind me that, and then they have an obligation then to work for the town of Hatfield for so long after completing?
Correct. We, I drew up some contracts, we sent it to council, they reviewed them a couple times. And now we do have one person that actually took advantage of the paramedic. So essentially, once they get their paramedic license, they sign on and say that they will work here for three years and then they are free and clear. Anything less than that, they have to pay it back. It either are prorated or if it's less than 50, if they only make it to 18 months, they have to pay back the whole thing. So it's all within the contract. We, there's a couple of different scenarios. If they don't finish school, they have to pay for it. So the town's not on the hook for the money if the person doesn't end up actually working.
Right. Okay, no, that's.
At the appropriate time. We've never had that. It had always been kind of a handshake agreement for the 21 years that I've been on the department. Yeah, we'll send you and work for us for two years. We unfortunately, we did get burned twice. So I, we had to come up with a plan to fix that so the town doesn't lose the money. And get something out of our return.
Right.
And then the, I'm sorry, does anyone have any questions on that? I just have a question moving forward.
I'm good, I'm ready for the next budget.
So then the, there's a $3,000 increase, just software licensing, what, what software is that?
So if this, if this were to go through, the 3,000 is for the online scheduling software that we currently are using. It's called a Ladtech. So it keeps track of all of our certifications, but it is how people are able to sign up for shifts instead of trying to do Excel sheets. I had tried that for a couple of months back in the spring and that was a disaster. Caught, spent three to four hours a week trying to figure out scheduling because people were trying to put in their availability and then I got to look and make sure that can that person work with someone? This program has everything already pre-built into it. All the shifts are pre-built, the days, the eves, the overnights. They sign up, I get an email and then I can go in and just click and approve it. So there's not back and forth in emails. A lot of other communities are using a program very similar, so that way.
And, and more accurate.
Yes, and it's keeping track of our certification. So when the state comes in for the ambulance license, I can pull one report and it gives them everything off of one instead of pulling out a three-ring binder with everybody's.
And they wouldn't have set schedules?
No, because currently they're, if we go to full-time, yes, the full-time staff would end up having certain days and then there would still be a few open shifts because across the board, when you look at us, it's not just a 40-hour work week. So some of the people have rotating schedules because they do work in other fire departments. So that's why they don't end up with a set schedule to pick when they can work. It's not as simple as just plugging them in every time.
Is that a one-time expense?
The, it's an annual renewal for 3,000.
Every year? Okay.
Essentially, if you look at, you know, but currently it's kind of, it's built into ambulance revenue as the way that you look at this. The big expense that's new is obviously the salaries.
And then in uniforms, it, it really only goes up nominally, that's enough to cover it?
Yes. Yeah, we've been fortunate. A few other things that you have listed there where it says the compliant coats.
Yep.
I've gotten grants that cover the cost of $335 coat, so that's, it's helpful. It's buying some polo shirts for some of the other staff and/or T-shirts, baseball caps, things that, you know, we should be providing them if they're working.
Right, right. Well, that's good, you went for grant money.
Yep. They actually should be coming in any, in the next week or so.
Okay, I mean, I, does anyone have any questions? So this is keeping.
Current model, 16-hour.
Keeping 16-hour, seven-day-a-week.
Correct.
But it won't be, but not per diem with, and what about on the benefit side? Well, have, is, have you worked?
We don't, because we don't include benefits on ours. I have talked to the treasurer and they've run the numbers, I do have it. I did express to her that, you know, if this goes through, we would be adding more.
We need to just make sure that, depending on what goes through, that the, the benefit line is changed accordingly.
We don't have a spot on our side for the cost, the actual benefits to plug into it. It would have to be, come from their office.
But it's just something to be mindful of.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so now the next one is, if, this is 16-hour coverage within station overnight departmental request?
Yep.
So this is the one that says a 287% increase on the front page?
Correct.
Okay.
So again, this goes to is that the, the fire portion, so the first couple of pages on the fire, you're going to see, see that same 2% increase that was in the other one.
Is that the same? Because I only have ambulance in this one. There's no, is there an adjustment in the fire?
The fire one stays exactly the same.
Okay.
It doesn't change because that, that's all. I don't know why there's not a copy, I know I handed.
But if it's the same, if it's the same in all of them, it doesn't matter? So we just?
Yep, so then it moves to the ambulance portion of this. And the difference with this one is the first couple of lines do stay the exact same as the 16-hour from the current model. So part of my pay, the full-time salaries, the part-time, the overtime. The difference that you see in this one is ultimately the ambulance EMT on-call. The $29,200 up from 15,000 is that with this would is the next step. Instead of relying on people to come from home for that 273, they're in-station. You're not paying them the full, you know, 19 or $24 hourly, but you pay them a $5 hourly because you're taking them out of their bed. And then when they do go on a call, they get paid for the call, but at a higher minimum. They go to a two-hour minimum, a three-hour minimum or a four-hour. We currently run a one, two and three. So currently they get one hour, if it ends up being a refusal, we don't transport. They go to Cooley, they get to, they go to Franklin Medical or Bay State Medical. Currently, everybody gets a three-hour minimum for doing that. This would take an increase is that a refusal goes to two, Cooley goes to three hours. And if you go to either of the Bay State hospitals, essentially you get a four-hour minimum.
But if they're, okay, so the on-call pay is lower.
Right, so the on-call, you're not paying them the full hourly. You're, so you're hourly, your on-call pay is higher than what we currently pay for people to be in their own bed.
Right, okay.
But you're not paying the entire night. So if there's no calls, you're just paying the overnight on-call.
Is that one person in the station?
Me too.
Two people in the station?
Because we currently have two people on from at home, so it'd be the same thing. It's kind of that bridge between the 16-hour with the current on-call to moving to the full 20.
Do we have the facility to accommodate that?
Yes, it would, it would require just reworking and moving the current staff office into the other half of my office that is currently under emergency management. It's, there will be a little bit of work that would have to be done. I think it's, you know, moving a countertop is how it was built, just so you can put a physical desk in there. There's already a computer, there's filing cabinets, everything else stays the same, it's just moving. And then that staff office, there's enough space to set up two beds and like a couple of little nightstands if you needed them, charging and so forth.
And that's, so you can do it that way even if it's a male and female?
So this essentially would have, keep, give us 24-hour-a-day coverage?
Correct. Without the actual full, paying, paying their full hourly wage for those eight-hour overnights.
Can, do you think you'd still go eat those overnights?
Most of the time I do believe I could because there's a lot of the current per diem that have expressed interest that they would be willing to stay on the overnight. They're working the 3 to 11. And they're like, oh, I'm already here, I don't really want to drive home at 11 or 11:30 anyway. I'll stay here and then I'll just leave in the morning when, you know, myself and the other full-timer come in, whichever one's on. Now they would just go home. So they provided the, the coverage and then they just take off. There's at least four of the per diems that I know of that have already expressed interest in it. They've tried to do it a couple of times and I'm like, if you want to sleep in the chair currently, fine. And we have done it. I have had, three times I've had people, they've, they've stayed.
And is that in here, like the purchasing of beds and stuff?
Nope, there's no purchasing of beds, I already have, have the equipment needed.
Okay.
And you don't need showers or anything?
We have a shower.
Oh, you do?
Yep, there's showers. Walk-in shower in the rear bathroom, laundry.
And it's okay to have one or both?
We have two bathrooms, but one shower, yeah.
Okay. So this one is.
This on my other side, the plumbing code says it's only one per 50, so.
So this is 16-hour, full-time, eight-hour.
In-station.
On-call.
Correct.
On-call, in-station.
Correct.
Does anyone else have questions about that?
Nope.
I mean, we didn't get into much about the, the numbers for the sake of townspeople, but the total on that one for salaries would be? What's the difference there, Bob?
Back to my page here. So total salaries with that option is $308,034.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
On the ambulance side?
Correct.
The fire, say.
2%, 2%.
And these, these individuals, Bob, would be cross-trained?
Yes.
That would be a requirement?
Yep.
So that means they'd be fire and police?
Fire and ambulance.
Fire and ambulance, yeah.
He can keep his.
If they could do all three, that would be really great, yeah.
It's hard to find those.
Yeah.
But yes, they, anybody after October 1st that I've hired has to be a dual role.
Okay.
We, we allowed it to be just EMTs at the beginning and realizing we were running short on fire calls, I had to make the decision that if you're going to come and work here, unless there's an extenuating circumstance, you're going to be a dual role. I have a couple of them and some of it has to do with some union issues with their full-time employment, that they can't be a firefighter, they can only be here as a paramedic, so. I'm not, I'm not going to get into fighting unions over it, but I'll, I need the paramedics.
Okay, and then the last of the proposals you've prepared for us, and I just want to say, Bob, you clearly put a lot of time and thought into this and we really appreciate it because it really spells out the difference of what we're going to get for these various budget amounts. So this one is called 24/7. So this would be 24/7, full-time?
Ambulance.
Full-time everything.
Would be fire too, because if they're cross-trained.
Right, this is the, this is like the big picture that we were kind of asked is that if you have things that you foresee in the next three to five years or even kind of a current, this is that big picture that I was asked numerous times when I come in. This essentially would be putting on a firefighter, paramedic and a firefighter EMT basic, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Okay.
So this is like that big, huge, huge bullet.
Okay, and so what is the total salary line? Well, we don't need to talk about fire, right? Because it's the same.
Yeah, actually, if, if you actually look at fire, fire technically goes down 16% in its total budget because the fire full-time salary, I've just moved to the new full-time salary line under ambulance budget. So it, it doesn't go away, it's just moved to the ambulance side as we look at the.
The cheap part of it?
Nope, mine, mine stays the same. I get a little bit from fire, or most of mine comes from fire and a little bit from the ambulance currently.
I'm sorry, then what one were you saying you're moving over there?
So the fire full-time salaries, so the second one down on the front sheet, you notice there's no number even plugged in at all.
Oh, yes, 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 okay, I see.
That goes away only because it moves to what is on this sheet listed as ambulance full-time.
Okay, I got you. I'm sorry. And so what is the total, if you added up all the salary lines on this proposal?
Well, they're not broken down separately, but the, the salaries from the ambulance ends up being just shy of $426,000 with the fire salaries at just over $117,000. So I could tell you that the, the total all-in for this combined budget, salaries, the whole nine yards, ends up at $627,49.50 is the total. And I do have the other totals if people are interested.
Is that the total of the?
That is the entire fire EMS budget.
Fire ambulance, fire ambulance combined.
Correct.
Is that on the?
Include emergency management, but.
Just for, for me and maybe for townspeople. So can you, let's go back to the 16-hour where there's an eight-hour on-call where they're sleeping there.
Here.
Here. So tell me what the all-in inclusive is on that budget.
I think that's, I, I agree with Daryl, that, and Bob, that was your suggestion too. I, I think that's, bottom line is kind of what people really want to hear. What we all want to know, what we all want to hear. And then you can compare it, we can all compare it.
So that all-in for the 16-hour with in-station overnight is $542,186.54.
Okay, so this is, I'm sorry, 16-hour full-time, eight-hour in-station.
Correct.
And that was, the number was?
542.
542, 186, 54.
And, and, and I'm sorry, what was the all-in for the other one, the 24/7?
627, 49, 50.
80,000 roughly, difference.
Okay.
How about the other two? I mean, you want to, might as well.
Yep. So the current model ends up being $525,904.26.
525.
904, 26.
Okay.
And I don't think I added the first one.
And level service.
You don't have it.
I didn't actually add that one on top, but, sorry.
Can you tell me what?
We can do it in our.
What were ambulance revenues last year?
So for end of fiscal year, we're at just shy of $108,000.
Okay, I thought you said, said they completely cover the ambulance salaries. They do now.
On, without the new staffing that we added in March and/or July, it has covered all of the ambulance operational costs from year to year with money going into ambulance surplus.
Okay, so, so the ambulance revenue figure for, are you like a fiscal year?
Yeah, they, they always, the ambulance runs as a fiscal year and then it's basically you take whatever we had, how do we need, what do we need to fund the new fiscal budget? And that's ultimately what gets left in ambulance revenue, which technically is ambulance surplus.
So for fiscal '23, you have a figure for what ambulance revenue was total?
Not for FY23 because that's what we're.
FY22.
22 was just shy of 108. It's like 107, 904 and change.
Okay.
But '23 with the additional calls being.
Are you on track to?
Should be higher.
We, right now, we are projected to be at 140 if we continue on the path.
Yeah, so about $32,000 more than last year.
Well, that is a lot of information, very clearly spelled out.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Bob. I know.
The budget presentation.
That's a lot of work because as you change things, things are going up and down in different, so a lot of, a lot of thought and work went into this. And it's, it's, yeah, it's good to have, this is going to be helpful.
I mean, just for reference and for towns folks. For reference, running the numbers based off of, you know, calls that have been missed in the past, if you look at what last year's were for missed calls and then obviously the call volume itself, it's, it's projected to be another 62,000 in additional revenue.
For what fiscal?
For FY, if we were to continue to move forward and be able to cover all the calls, projected that it would be about $62,000 in additional revenue.
So we'd, we'd come in around 200,000 in revenue?
Give or take, yes, correct.
If, if, if all the calls were answered.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So that was obviously the goal of putting the staffing out and things like that.
Right.
I think we've missed, so far this year, we're at 58 calls for the year EMS.
So if we did the 16-hour, I got to get my brain, eight-hour on-call where they're.
In-station.
In-station, thank you. I got to write in-station, so then that'll, how, do you think that model we would cover? Let's say 98% of our calls?
Is that high?
I mean, that's high, because you know you're going to have multiple calls sometimes.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I would say that we, based off of what last year's, what we did cover, with new staff and covering and having people in the station, I would say that we're probably going to be into the high 80s, low 90s, would be a legit number. Because again, it's no guarantee that somebody's going to take an overnight shift.
Right.
It's the idea that hopefully two people take it, and now you cover every call.
Versus the all-in 24/7, how many, how many full-time employees does that, would that?
Eight. Well, nine, sorry. Eight.
Nine including yourself.
Eight staff and myself, yes.
So, and then, and that, we could, you, you get pretty much closer to that 100%.
I would project that we wouldn't, maybe eight to 10 calls total in a year, and last year we had 425.
When you have dual call, when you have.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, right, if they're at one call and another call, there's nothing you can do about that.
I mean, we've, already four times this year, we've already had it where we're already committed on a call and another call happens.
Right.
When you look at our numbers.
And that's unavoidable.
That's not going to happen unless we get another truck and staff, like that's a way bigger. But, last year, I think it was 10 simultaneous calls, or eight simultaneous calls. So if you take their, that's pretty been, pretty standard from year to year.
Yeah.
That's essentially what we would be missing.
Right. And certain, I mean, if you're taking someone to Bay State, you're out of service for longer.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I've talked to, you know, the other agencies that we obviously deal with that are near us. A, a plus side, and I can't give you a real number, because I don't know that if we were to be staffed, we now ultimately would get moved up on other run cards. There's a projection that you could add another 50 calls to us, which is, you know, potentially another 35,000 in revenue, and that's just reciprocating for all the years of them coming in. It's just part of the system overall of mutual aid. It's not we're advertising. It's just that we would be here currently, you know, East Hampton responds to Rock Ridge when we're two and a half miles away, so I know that that would change. They would call us because we're right down the road. I can't give you a firm number, but it would be, it would increase, I know.
It would take, yeah. Take a couple of years to get those numbers.
How hard would it be if you went with the 24? How hard would it be to fill those eight positions?
To be honest, if I, if you had to say that I had to fill it like now, I would say that it would be tough for the next few months, because there are three other, four other agencies up and down the Pioneer Valley that are all hiring at the same time. We're all looking for the same people. There are a couple of new paramedic classes that are, they're in their ride time or their clinical time. So those, you'll have a new group of 40 to 50 people presumably within the next four to six months of where they are in their program. And another set but, 10 months from now.
My, yeah, and, and, but probably all these other departments, there's, there's a continuing need, there's just a lack of, of staff on departments in all times.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of candidates out there right now.
Yeah, but in, in fire, I mean, you know. Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that as, 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 you shouldn't go for that, I'm just putting that out there.
Yes. No, it, it absolutely is a, is a potential issue. It'd be harder to hire just because everybody is looking. There's been a lot of studies up and down the valley between the fire chiefs comparing wages, because everybody's in the same boat.
Yeah, the way, yeah.
You know, are we comparable? Everybody wants to try to see where everybody's at, and wondering if that's why they're not getting enough applicants. You know, I gotta be honest, based off of the numbers that have been floated around, and not every fire chief has included them. To be honest, we're, we're pretty much right on the ball for the most part. We're not that far under some of them.
Surprising thing for me, really.
I mean, I think some of you have probably seen it, I mean, a senior firefighter in Northampton right now is making 26. Thirty-year person making 26 bucks an hour. Our medics are making just shy of 25, and part of, part of these budgets all have increases to get the positions to be competitive, or at least close.
Well, there's no sense in creating them if they're not competitive.
Correct. And obviously, the volume's less, so it, it's easy to justify why, you know, Hatfield potentially would be paying $3 or $4 less an hour than one of the others, but each of those trucks is doing 12 calls a shift. You know, we're doing two to three. And that's kind of our norm. I think 1.6 calls a day right now is our average through the first forty days.
Well, you just said two to three a shift. We're not doing two to three a shift.
If you, a lot of the days, we are going out two to three times. If you take the current first 46 days or whatever we're at, it's out at 1.61 calls per day.
Per day, not per shift, okay.
Yeah, per day. So, just a comparison of, you know, our pay is actually not that far off.
Glad to hear that.
Compared to a lot of others. And if, you know, this obviously would be approved, it does have some increases, which would put us pretty much right on par with a new entry-level person, whether it be a paramedic or a basic.
Okay. Bob, when you spoke to the level budget, was that based on '22 operation or FY '21? Was it '22's operation? I think that's what you said it was based on.
The level would have been on FY '22.
Yeah, okay.
Fire, adding staffing.
Excuse me.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, that was a good presentation. I, I'm all set. I don't know if anyone else has.
Well, well, for me, to look at four different scenarios, I like to put them up on a screen, because, because I'm still wrapping my head around the four different ones, and it's not, it's a lot easier for me to see them up on the screen. That's just me.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it comes down to what we think. You know, it's what townspeople want, you know, and which one, which one do you put forward? I, I can't give you the answer right now.
And we don't have information yet about other options, so that's part of this, and it, we are exploring it. I feel we have an obligation to, to townspeople to explore that. So that is in process. But, you know, for the sake of this year, we're probably going to have to make a decision on how to move forward and then.
Yep.
Fortunately, we're, we are stuck. Any other option is also only EMS. I, I know I keep repeating myself dozens of times. Any of the other third parties or any other option that's there is currently only being looked at as EMS, not the dual role positions that all four of these cover. So that's another piece that I think the residents should also understand, that it's not just about staffing the ambulance within the fire department, it's staffing both fire and EMS. And a loss of revenue.
Have you done any research, Bob, on the change, this is a change in your operations, what you're overseeing? So have you done any research in what might be a reasonable expectation for increases in your salary as we decide on what, because you go from having no employees to having one employee to having, I mean, in some cases, what, nine or 10? That clearly is a difference in your job.
Sure.
Um, so I'm just curious if you've done, I mean, there's, you hadn't, you didn't build anything into these projections?
No, I did not.
But we should know moving forward, what would be a reasonable expectation for a, a chief in your position to expect? Because I'm under the impression that even in your current salary, you're low pay.
Correct. Yes. The, the next highest or lowest, however you want to look at it, for not even the same, is about 11 grand more than I make. Now, they're, none of, none of the people that I've given some information to the select board about, none of them are paramedics, they have EMS coordinators, they have fire prevention officers that are full-time, things like that, and the low end was 11, and it's, there's an 11,000 to $26,000 discrepancy depending on.
As it is right now.
As it sits right now.
So then when you, if, if, if this department, I would like to know, maybe what would be a reasonable expectation on your part? If you're overseeing a department like this?
I would venture to say somewhere between a, a 10 to $15,000 increase over my current budget, or my current salary. With, with some of these options is me not necessarily being on the road, so I'm still overseeing the ambulance. I'm still going on high acuity calls, CQI and doing those things, but I would be spending a little less time physically on as the primary paramedic that I currently am.
Which is of.
So more oversight, but a little bit less.
Less response.
Physical, actual work.
Response.
Correct.
Right.
In some ways.
Off-hours response.
Yeah, I mean, the 24/7 would leave me that I wouldn't have to go out and do all that. Except for big.
What would you even do with yourself? How would you even adjust to that?
Not sure what I would do at this point.
Lay awake and listen to the radio.
What, what sort of, we've been increasing slowly, and it looks like we're ready to jump. If we need to go the way we, we're going, we're going to have a big jump here, right? And can the town absorb that kind of big jump? And were they willing to pay for that kind of big jump? I don't know. I know there's a lot of people that want, you know, an ambulance in town, and they want the response, but when it comes to the pocketbook, what, what is an expectation of what the average taxpayer can afford? I guess that's what it comes down to.
And what are the other options? Because right now, we don't know what that means, right? What, what are the costs of the other options? What are response times of other options? Those are things that are going to matter. So we're, we're working on that piece of it, but we have to look at what we have available to us now. And this was a lot of work, and I appreciate it.
Sean, did you have a question? I looked like you were.
I was just wondering, like, in some ways, does going to like a more full-time situation make your job easier in some ways? Because you don't have to scrape and pull together and get people coordinated to fill every, pretty much, you kind of know what's going to happen, other than when people take vacation, or, you know, like, it's not, it's more predictable.
Right, yes. It, it certainly would make, make things different, is not having to worry about filling shifts, it's only when somebody's out. So that's where there's that, you know, little less responsibility of actually going to calls, but there's more people to oversee. You know, scheduling when people get sick, IOD, all those other things that now all of a sudden become, we currently really don't have, because it's a small group of folks, so you're adding more.
The, the training, the, the training line didn't go up much in either one. Are you just expecting you would bring people on who are fully trained?
Yeah, the, the fire training is basically our Thursday night training, so.
No, no, on the ambulance side, you had, the, one of the jumps had a, an increase, but then some of the other higher staffing levels didn't have training increases? So you're, you're, you're assuming that you're going to just hire people who are fully, already paramedics, already EMTs?
Yeah, we, the, I don't think we have the ability to hire somebody and then send them and pay them for, to work as a basic, because now you're taking them as a basic, sending them to a paramedic school, but if you've already filled the paramedic position, now what do you do with them in the 18 to 22 months when they get that card? Do we even have a full-time spot for you, even though you were a full-time basic? So now it comes into the, what do you do with them?
Yeah, okay, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we've accounted for necessary training in, in each of the scenarios.
I have a question. Since we're talking about adding a substantial number of people, do we have an estimate as to what the average cost of benefits is per employee?
Well, that's a great question, and that's going to have to come from the treasurer's side. When, when we meet with her, could you ask her to give information on that?
And that's going up, right, Marlene?
Yes, it is. 6% increase in health insurance.
Okay.
So whatever is just going up 6%.
A, a great way to lay it out, Bob, with all the different scenarios. Really great.
It's a little more clear than the last few times I've come in. At least there's papers to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. Do you guys have any more questions?
It's a lot towards source.
It is a lot, it's a lot, and.
Yeah.
And, and I think. Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, thank you very much, Bob.
I don't have.
Get a call tonight, which is unusual for when you're here.
You just jinxed them.
I know.
Bob, you had mentioned that you may have to hire another full-time in January or February. Are you still looking at doing that?
We do have a posting out now to backfill.
That was the second.
Firefighter Siliberto's spot, because he's leaving.
Right.
Especially the middle of March. He's leaving.
But that was before he was going to be leaving, though. You thought you might need to.
Yeah, you said that you would.
And there was still another, the thought was to hire a full-time paramedic, because we were having a harder time filling some of the medic shifts.
So what's the status of that?
Uh, the, a couple of them have started picking up a few more shifts, and one of them just actually got cleared from light duty from their other job. We, we actually hired her. She got hurt a week later, so hasn't been able to work for us. So that kind of put a damper on things.
Hurt somewhere else, yeah.
Hurt on another job.
Yeah.
So it was kind of the waiting game to let her get healed, because it was, is an employee that had expressed working probably one to two shifts a week at a minimum. And then on top of the other couple of medics that have all been pretty, pretty consistent of one to two shifts a week across the board, so.
Okay, so right now, you're not doing that.
I was trying to hold out a little bit longer to allow her to be able to hopefully pick up some shifts, see how that works with some of the, with the other five paramedics. We did lose one. They, they're giving up their card.
Oh, you mentioned that.
At the end of December.
Yeah.
So I was trying, you got to play it out, because you don't know what people are willing to take.
Right.
So trying to hold off, and obviously, a big piece of it is if I go to advertise for a position, say, like you to come work here, but you may not have a job June 30th. Makes it
Right.
harder to try to hire somebody ultimately.
That's really too bad to lose office, uh, firefighter Siliberto, because he was really great.
Yes. He's, uh, he's going to spend the next month and a half kind of showing firefighter Missoula's with myself some of the backside things that he does with Excel sheets and all those things, just to make sure that we're on the same page. We know the data. It's getting it back out of his programs that he built.
Right.
So, he's making a tutorial for both of us.
Young people, huh?
Yeah, right?
And we didn't lose him to another department.
Right.
And he actually wants to stay on, on the department as a per diem staff.
Nice. Well, that's great, because he, he's been a nice addition.
Very much.
Agreed.
Okay, and so that actually brings up a good point, though, is workers' comp. If, there would be a difference in the workers' comp line as well, staffing out at that? Because this is a, I mean, quite frankly, it's a position that is a little more vulnerable, maybe to work-related injuries than a lot of our typical employees, so I'm just curious if there's a way to project that in the workers' comp line.
Workers' comp is just based on an annual premium that we pay, however, there's usually an annual audit.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they audit them, yeah.
And so speaking of that, I don't think I had the information at our meeting last week. We met last week, yes. So, you know, following the audit, we are invoiced. Sometimes, you know, there is, we have credit available and we'll apply the credit. And, and, so last year, it was not done. The previous year, it was an additional premium cost of, I believe, $1,300. The invoice I received last week shocked me very much. Six thousand, a little over $6,000 additional premium. I'm like, how can you possibly, possibly budget for something like that? So I've been comparing it to the last one, and I've had questions for the insurance company. So their, so the comparison is the previous one, which was July 1 of 2019 to June 30 of 2020. That was the year of COVID. And so a number of employees apparently were not working. The school payroll had decreased. Our biggest increase as far as the rate, because each, each classification has a, a pay rate. And the pay rate for roads, streets, and maintenance, and that would be highway, has increased significantly. The payroll at the schools has increased significantly over the previous payroll.
But this would have the same impact, that's what I'm saying.
So we're adding, yeah, the more you.
I just didn't know if there was any way to project.
The more you increase your, your, your payroll.
Right, yeah, that's my point. I don't know if there's any way to project that.
Yeah. It's very difficult to do that.
Project, it's why they audit it.
On the back end.
Because per diem people are getting it.
But that was shell shock when I got that invoice, and it's, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Marlene, fire and police are under a separate policy too, correct?
There's still.
Still.
Well, you're, you're. Your injury, your injury and medical is under a separate policy, but I believe payroll is still part of the workers' comp audit. Or maybe it's not. I'll, I'll check that.
I believe we're under a separate.
You are, yeah, it is a separate policy for coverage, but, and, but they don't audit payroll for fire and, and police. That's why I'm inclined to think that it's, that the workers' comp audit that we get includes. That's why I'm inclined to think that it's, that the workers' comp audit that we get includes emergency service employees.
Well, it's worth looking at.
I will check. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm good. Anybody else have anything?
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Look at that, we're finishing up at exactly the time Bob was supposed to come in. Thanks for coming down early, Bob. I thought we'd be here till 8 o'clock.